I'm sorry. I think we'll be done. My sister has to get it.
You're not allowed to tell my daughter. We have fifty dogs if it was up to her. That one's plenty and she fits in just fine.
She's not even...
This one is good when you can mold it to whatever you need.
But now, a dog place. A municipal.
It's my sister's dog and it had puppies, so she has nine to get rid of.
So what kind is it?
They're kind of... She is... We don't know what kind it was. Her husband found her down at the bottom where her... And... Yeah. And so, and they also have a chocolate lab. So we think that's the culprit for it.
My baby dog.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a big dog.
Okay.
He's... Cause he's big.
I got a cousin that's looking for a little companion dog for her little dog. But she wants a small dog.
Yeah. So, and they got that one because he was fishing and he watched somebody kick it out of their truck.
Oh.
It's okay. Everything's disappeared. So, okay.
No, I've been sitting here trying to figure out what I'm...
That garden.
Your butt's doing all right?
Yeah. Yours? Didn't feel all tense about it?
No, not yet.
Yeah.
She doing all right?
Heard Pearl.
It's gonna hurt him. Mr. Gut. And I don't think Kendall has completed.
No, not the rest of them.
Bob.
What do we do?
Three and six is not coming off. They've got red lights.
All right, let's see.
Well, we don't have anything...
Your work's... Should I just turn it off?
I don't need a mic. No, I don't think you do.
I don't.
I don't even speak your time. I definitely don't need a mic. We have to turn that off.
I'm not sure.
Still didn't come on?
Not signal from here on. Three and six.
Now there's not. There are a lot of us.
Give me that. Turn this off?
No. Now they have one. And last... Six is not...
One, three, and six.
Six. I swear it didn't. Turn your lights off.
Turn them all off?
Uh, turn them all off. Catch yours. All right, now let's turn them back on. Same thing. One, three, and six is picking up.
One, three, and four.
He has his mouth. Is it on now? Yes.
Those are actually good and bright.
I must not be six. It's Jimmy.
All right, let me sit here and see what we got.
Well, Tippy and I have to speak up.
Take it one.
Uh, Sheila. Yeah.
Tap on yours. Tap on it.
I did.
It's not picking up. Four, six.
Six is gonna be keep out of Jenny. I wonder if twice a couple of batteries.
Losing your lights will start getting dim.
I know it.
Check. One, two. Check. Check. Just my crutch, man. Sure. Me and Sheila just won't sign nothing. Well, y'all just want to keep quiet tonight.
Yeah, I'll share.
Huh.
I'm gonna push it on.
Check.
Now, y'all have to speak quite well with...
I'm faithful.
Check. Good. Check on yours.
Check.
Check. I didn't hear you.
No. Check.
Number one. I ain't hearing you at all. Six, one's not working at all. You're number one, right?
I guess.
Well, it's three and three and six.
You may just go ahead and turn it off. It's not gonna be...
Well...
We should kinda turn the call off. She made it. We don't get the call for nothing.
Try yours, Mayor. See what kinda sound like.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Number...
I don't know.
He's four.
Four?
Good evening.
Try again.
Good evening. You there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we need to hear you.
I'll try to speak. Close getting into the line. Okay.
All right, yours is all right.
Yes.
Yours all right? A little closer, too.
Hello?
Yours?
Yes.
A little closer than all. A little far.
Yes.
It wasn't good.
Thank you so much. Now, it's seven o'clock, so I'll call Mulberry City Council meeting in order at this time. If you'll stand, we'll have open prayer and congratulations. Father in heaven, we do thank you so much, Lord, for another day that you have given us to enjoy and for the blessings that you have bestowed upon each one of us. We thank you, Lord, for your presence with us at all times. Thank you for our council. Thank you, Lord, for the business that we conduct for the city of Mulberry. We just pray, Lord, everything would be done in order and done properly and that our citizens will be served with honor and with integrity. We thank you, Lord, for those that are serving us in our protection, for our police, our fire, our first responders, our military, and our medical personnel. Those that are looking out for our safety and welfare, we pray you would bless them and protect them and keep them from the diseases and keep them more safe in their activities. And, Lord, we pray that you bless our country. We pray, Father, that you would just use each one of us to bring glory to Christ towards His name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Financial reasons to rely on the United States of America and consider the government for which you stand one nation under one God, individual for the unity and access to God.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, I'm certain to roll call, but I'd like to introduce Sarah Kaiser. She is now going to take the minutes for the council. She is our new court clerk. And so, I'm really pleased her being here at that time. And before she takes a while, I'd say to each one of you council members and to Carla, congratulations to all of you on your reelections and appreciate each one of you. So, Sarah, would you do the roll call, please?
Wilma TV?
Yes.
Bobby Tweedy?
Here.
Sheila Trent?
Here.
Stacy Munt?
Here.
Kimberly Bruce?
Here.
Jimmy Moore?
Here.
Carla Sutherland?
Here.
Mayor Baxter?
Here.
Okay, first on agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. October minutes and financial statements, council. You had all those that were mailed to you. You had opportunity to look them over. Are there any corrections, additions, comments, or changes that need to be made to either the minutes or the financial statements?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve?
I'll second it.
Motion's been stated.
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby? Sheila?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to departmental reports. And our first departmental report will be from our club of works, Mr. Jim Julian.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Everything seems to be going pretty good. We've had some trees down the last few days. Can you hear me now?
No.
Anyway, we've had some wind come through Mulberry and we've been cleaning up the last two days. Everything seems to be running good at the end of the year. We've been helping with the pantry also, getting it set up. As far as I know, we're doing well. All my guys are really chipping in at this time of year and doing their job. Is there any questions?
Lights look good.
Yes, they do.
I'm sorry?
Your lights. I said they look good.
I was gonna look at them tonight on the way out here. We had a long talk this afternoon about them. And I said I'm gonna make sure that they come on at five o'clock at the mayor's request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please report to Chief Gregory's here. Give the...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
You're not in.
We were steady last month, for sure. We had 190 calls, 64 traffic stops, 22 citations issued, had 19 arrests, 10 felony, 9 misdemeanors, had 9 assists, excuse me, did 43 reports and 398 business checks. So we've been pretty busy. We're not shorthanded, but we're a little shorthanded because we had a family emergency. One of the officers is gonna be gone for a little bit, but everything's good with that and life is good, so... Any questions? Thank y'all.
On the fire department report, I will tell you that for the month of October number two, responses to fires, 16 rescue and emergency medical services and two good and gent calls, or total of three responses for the fire department last month. Next on the agenda is new business. Our new business, the first order of business is the proposed dog ordinance for the second reading. Monica, do the... Do the second reading for... First reading was last month. This is the second reading. Third and finally the next month for voting next month.
Can we move to read it by title only or...
I don't see any problem with that because what you desire, you can certainly do that.
I don't have it, Mayor. I move that we... Read title only on the receipt.
Okay, motion's been made that suspend the rules and hold this ordinance by title only. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
City of Mulberry, Arkansas, ordinance 2020-05. An ordinance regulating the keeping of animals within the city of Mulberry, repealing conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Thank you. That is the second reading. The third and final reading will be next month, December. The next... We had on the old business about the communities unlimited income and talk about solid waste collection. However, we were contacted by them and their corporation mandates that they cannot go to one other location after they've been to one location in a two-week period. And so, they were prohibited from coming tonight. So we rescheduled that to the January meeting. Next in the old business is discussion of proposed property donation to the city. This was brought up last month and tabled for a break back this month. We requested that we research and find out what it would cost to have the house removed. Mr. Jim Julian got a couple of bids on that. And one, the first bids come up, one was $3,400, one was $3,550. But that was, they thought that they could burn some of that own property. When they were told, no, you can't burn that. You'll have to haul everything off except the rock. Then, then went up to $4,500 for removing that. Now, the property that we looked at was at 1.6 acres there, as you all had seen. And I asked Molly Dickerson, who's here tonight, if she would help us determine, you know, what the value of a property that would be with the house removed, you know, a lot like that. And I think Molly, if you'll shake your head this way, is that correct? But it's $15,000. Is that correct? Did I talk about probably the value? So if we had extended $4,500 on it, then the other part would be what the value would be as far as the property. Now, the uses for the property, as y'all saw in the, what was mailed to you, there was stipulations that it would be named, the use of it would be named Pauline's Place. And that was one of the stipulations. And the other, as y'all read on the deed there, it would be dedicated to... Let me see. Let me get that correct. For the purposes of senior housing, if appropriate, and otherwise, in any other lawful public, purposes provided that any use of the property shall be named with appropriate signage, Pauline's Place. So that is a stipulation if you so decide that you want to have that property donated to the city or you don't. That's certainly council's decision. So however you wanna discuss that, talk about that, since it was tabled last month and brought for you this month, what is, I guess...
Let's see. Could you tell us again where it is, the property?
Yes. It is on Alma Avenue and it's a... What is that address? It's eight something...
I'm not sure. So on Alma Avenue, the center of going down Alma Avenue, there's a little bit of a block, light block there, a house. And then this house is right beside it.
Between ninety and nine?
There's 1.6 acres there.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
And no one's lived there for many years. But they're wanting to donate the property to the city.
Does this property join our property as far as the city?
It joins the area agency's property. Yes, it joins the area agency, the aging property. And there in the back. And there's a house that is just to the south of this, the house that's printed there. Now, if, if the council, if you decide you wanna accept this donation and the property and the house would be taken down, which Julian and others have inspected and they said it's not repairable, it'd have to be taken down. If you decide you want it, we would like to retain the rocks on it and use the rocks to outline there in the bar, where we started, outline those rocks in the creek. That will, you know, make it look nice and also help for protecting erosion, things like that. So we would be retaining the rocks, the rock structure south after it is removed.
So how would that work, Gary? Would we sell the land to a contractor, a builder? With the stipulation, it has to be...
Right. If it was sold for senior adult housing, then it would have to be... This deed would have to go with it because that is the stipulation. So it would have to be that would be part of it.
Have you discussed this with the area agency, an aging?
The area agency of aging joins it.
I know. Have you discussed this with the idea of possibility of doing the senior resident area? I mean, is there any... Have we had any conversation regarding that? Or is this just kind of...
Right. Now, the area agency of aging is kind of on hold according to what our CEOs told me about the property. What my, my long range plans, and I think, you know, we can... I think this might be even a time to talk to the council about this. I would like to talk to the area agency of aging and see if they would donate to the city two acres on 64 Highway that's next to the senior city for future fire department, fire station in the future. We're gonna, something we need, long-term plans. And I've kind of laid some groundwork for that through the people that originally sold the property. The property was to be used for senior health. And they are in agreement that they would not have any problem with that land being used for that particular purpose. So that's something that in long range, if we can acquire that, it'd be several years down the road. But there are more funding out there available for fire department construction than there are for other types of construction. That's a, that's a future plan and that's something that I'm in preliminary talks on that. If it ever got to a point where it would be serious, then certainly it would come to the council. The council would have to make the decision of whether to enter into that even type of arrangement there.
This property here would not be sufficient to put a fire station or anything on?
Probably not because the goal would be to have easy access right on 64 Highway.
Well, I think it's just we own the property behind it. It might...
We don't. We don't own it.
The area agency of aging, the part that the city owns is actually the part that the senior center is actually...
I think it's the same.
The two and a half acres there that the senior center's own is owned by the city. And then the southern property is owned by area agency of aging.
The area agency owns basically what, over to that ditch?
Yes. Well, they own past that ditch.
Well, you'll pass the ditch.
Yes, they own all the ditch.
And all the way back to the...
Right.
Back to the road.
Right. And we have helped the area agency of aging, some to keep that ditch clean out through there. And we have provisions from the area agency of aging to utilize and be on their property any way they want to be, you know, as far as just using it and helping out there.
Are you thinking maybe we might swap the area agency that, the property that we're looking at?
Well, that could be a possibility, you know, if they're wanting funding for it, you know. Maybe they have something that you can borrow them on if you wanted to work that way. So that is a real possibility. Yes.
Do you think that's a good investment for us?
You know, I've looked at it and I've tried to, you know, look at it from every angle. I told Monica, I talked to Monica, I said, you know, I wanna look at the pros and the cons and don't wanna try to talk the council into it or out of it, you know. I want y'all to really think about it, think about it, you know, as far as future long-term plans. Is it, you know, a good investment for the city to have? And obviously, it would help some people that wants to donate it. And if the city took it over, we would have the responsibility of then to take down the property. And so we would have, you know... And then we could get some other bids on there. We've got these... See if we could get less than 45.
That's like a fair bid for taking that down as far as, you know...
That's gonna be some heavy equipment because of the rock.
And a rock building.
It's a rock building. So that's probably...
So the only way something could be built on it, we would have to sell the land to the contractor to build on it and then it's towards us.
And it would have to be...
It'd be senior adult housing.
Right. I know we're locked in is what it could be for.
Right.
So we're locked in. It's gonna be used for the one thing.
Right.
But we couldn't, as a city, we couldn't have something built on it.
The city could have senior adult housing built on it.
Right.
If the city wanted to, you know...
The city wanted to do that.
Okay. The city would have, just like, you know, we own the building where the fly shop is. shop is.
Right.
City could own that, and could own properties, and like the city of Fort Smith, you know, you own housing, and it would just be, if the city ever wanted.
Is that something that we would ever want to do, though?
I don't know. That's something, but it's, you know, if you get it, you know, you're looking at long-term, you know, as far as.
Be more of an investment in the future.
Sometimes it's not right now. Unless something come along, you know, that looked like, you know, somebody comes, approached the city and said, hey, you know, if you'd make me a good deal on this, we'd do this. You know, it's the same way, you know, if, like when we had property in the investor park, we said, we'll give you that property.
Right.
And then it's written in there, if you will build within a year and operate it for five years, you know, or something like that, you know, hey, I'll make you a good deal, this property, if you'll build some senior adult housing on there, and within, start construction within a year, and, or however, you know, our attorneys would write it all out, work that. So let's make sure, you know, that you understand fully, you know, y'all have read this, and so it's strictly what the council would like to do.
Well, the process is right.
Yeah.
Well, let's do this. Monica, would you read that resolution? And the resolution, and then we can have a motion and a second, and then we'll have discussion, and you'll decide whether you want to approve it or not.
City of Mulberry, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2020-12. A resolution accepting a deed of dedication from Tara Rochelle Wilson and Paul Shannon Matters, trustees of the Paul and Wanda Matters Irrevocable Living Trust, dated August 27, 2020, for property to be used for public purposes in the city of Mulberry, Arkansas. I'm going to stand over here. Sorry. Whereas, the city of Mulberry, Arkansas, has adopted a plan for use of real property owned by the city of Mulberry. Whereas, Paul T. Matters and Wanda Lou Matters desire to dedicate the property to the fair, to the public for use as a senior housing or other public purposes with a plan for its naming and, with a plan for its naming and use and development. Whereas, the public use of the property would greatly benefit the city of Mulberry, Arkansas, and its citizens. Therefore, be a resolved by the city council of the city of Mulberry, Arkansas, as follows. Section 1, the city council hereby accepts the property described in the dedication deed attached as Exhibit A heretofore, and acknowledges the restrictions and obligations imposed in said deed for the perpetual public benefit, naming, and desired development of the property. The city council hereby authorizes the mayor to execute any documents necessary to accept the property.
So it doesn't necessarily say from time? I make a motion. I say to, to, to accept this resolution.
So a motion has been made to accept this donation, according to Resolution 2020-12. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made, it's seconded, is there any discussion?
I have, it read to me that they said they would prefer senior center, but anything to help the city of Mulberry would be, could be used for. Is that, am I reading, am I hearing that correctly?
You're subject to the restrictions in the actual deed.
Would you read the actual deed?
Yes, sir. So the dedication deed, know all persons by these presents, that Tara Rochelle Wilson and Paul Shannon Matters, trustees of the Paul and Wanda Matters Irrevocable Living Trust, dated August 27, 2020, grantors, for and in consideration of the benefits accruing and to accrue to them and to the public generally, do hereby dedicate, give, and convey into the city of Mulberry, Arkansas, a duly incorporated city of the second class under the laws of the state of Arkansas, grantee. Those certain lands, the dedicated property, lying in Crawford County, Arkansas, shown and described in the attached legal description made apart hereof and identified as attachment Exhibit A, for the purposes of senior housing, if appropriate, and otherwise, any other lawful public purposes, provided that any use of the property shall be named with the appropriate signage, Pauline's Place. Grantors, warrant that grant, grantors, warrant that grantors are the owners of the dedicated property and will defend title to the property against the claims of any and all persons claiming by, through, or under grantors, and that grantors have full authority to grant the dedication deed according to its terms.
So does that mean senior housing is for other lawful?
It's long as it's been listed, city.
Right. And name Pauline's Place.
Right.
Make a motion to accept this.
A second.
You have a motion.
We already have a motion, it's seconded, that's okay. If there are any further discussion?
No. Will, Bobby? Sheila?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have, no new business. I wanted to, it was brought up last council about the Ninth Street speeding, and we have, we had a petition from the individuals that live on West Ninth Street, that they are requesting that speed bumps be put on West Ninth Street. And when this was brought up at the council last month, if y'all remember, Sergeant McCabe was here, and so Sergeant McCabe was directed right there at the council, meeting right at the council to initiate the evaluation of them. And so Chief Gregory is here, I'd like for Chief to come and explain, the police department has done an evaluation over the last month of that street, and Chief had sent me an email, but I'd like for him just to explain to the council, get their evaluation.
Basically, I had myself and my guys sitting on Ninth Street, I bet in the last month, morning, noon, night, 3:00 in the morning, just all times. We had one, we actually had two traffic stops in the last month on that, and one was like six miles an hour over. The other one was 11 miles an hour over at 3:00 in the morning, nobody was out, and he wasn't drunk, he was coming home late from work, and my office said, have a good day, go home, get some sleep. It's not my decision, my, in my thinking, like I sat there for several hours today, and I think I had five cars pass, none of them speeding. I was even kind of hiding a little bit to see if I would catch somebody speeding, because there's not a whole lot of places for us to sit where people can't see us there. So I kind of got in a little hidey hole, backed up in somebody's garage, and sat there. And I had no one come through speeding. I'm not, if you want to say no one ever speed down that road, that would be silly. I think we've got, you know, we've got the petition that people signed, I think it's something you should think about. I think something we also ought to think about is every funeral that comes from the west, goes down that road, and we're going to have everybody in the funeral going over these speed bumps. And I don't know if that should come into play or not. Basically, it's up to y'all, but as far as us, we did not see a problem while we were there. That's all I really knew to say, but I think.
Any questions? You got anything else, Mayor? No, and unless the council gives directions that speed bumps be placed on that street, and that based upon the evaluation, we will not put speed bumps on there, recommendation from the police department.
What percentage signed the petition?
Well, all.
All?
But there were one that lived on West Ninth Street.
All of them on the street? And, you know, I know that when you're sitting and people are driving by, sometimes it seems like they're going a lot faster than what they are. What is the speed limit on that street?
The 20,000.
The speed limit is 20 miles an hour.
Okay.
And like a lot of, a lot of our roads in our town are narrow.
Right.
And even as a trained person, you know, in order for us to get our license to run the radar, we've got to judge so many cars within five miles an hour of their actual speed. It's really easy on 64 Highway or on Interstate 4, but you get on these smaller roads that's narrow, it's really hard to judge, even for me. And I've been doing it 23 years, so, you know, they, they look like they're going a lot faster than they are. I even had one that I thought I would have swore was speeding last week out there, but, you know, the radar said it was, you know, and, but.
Do you think a lot of this was brought on by the child getting hit?
I don't know. There was talk of it prior to.
Yes. I mean, I think they, the people that had initiated it had been talking about it before that happened, and that just kind of solidified their wanting to have a speed bumps. Now, I know they requested three speed bumps, which is a little, probably too much. I mean, I mean, I would suggest if you did speed bumps, maybe just one in the middle to kind of, to slow them down. I wouldn't think you would need them at both ends and the middle, but.
Their request out here was three speed bumps, one at each end, one at the center. Now, that, three speed bumps, that would entail like six, because you have to use two each time, and if I remember correctly, they're about $200 a piece, something like that. And so that's the cost of what that would be. So anyway, that's, that's where we are on the police evaluation, and the speed limit's 20 miles an hour.
I mean, I know the residents were pretty upset over the, I mean, to them, speeding, and I know there's a lot of young children, which should, you know, people, there's a lot of streets with a lot of young children. And I know there's a lot of streets that I've been seeing on Facebook that people have been complaining about people flying, you know, flying by different hours of the night and stuff.
We had, not long ago, it was like summer, earlier, Jewel Drive, we had some citizens on Jewel Drive, and things like that. So we monitored that, and after we monitored that, then I went back to the citizens, and I said, do y'all want to do a petition? Do you want to do that? And they said, well, it's really slowed down, since I've seen the police out here, and said that there's not a problem here in Lomond. So that's one of the things that I've been told on Jewel Drive, of the residents there, that it is. In our place, you know, I said, monitor this, and as you heard, Chief.
If y'all want to, I mean, it's up to y'all completely. If y'all want to put it off for another month, we'll look at it for the next month and see what, what happens within the next month. I mean, like I said, there's very little traffic there, and I mean, I say you can come through there today, but.
Yeah, I saw you.
You know, there's very little traffic out here today. Officer Hiss will talk about Ninth Street. Do you have a lot of traffic at Ninth as far as late night or?
Fridays and weekends, that's where the traffic picks up, that's when the parties start. That's where you're going to get your traffic, and it's not so much there today.
And going, the only problem I really see is if you're going eastbound, you know, they can kind of hit it at an angle, if nothing's coming, and kind of keep speed, but the road is less than two tenths of a mile, barely, barely one tenth of a mile.
It almost would burn the road.
You know, I mean, it's, it's one tenth of a mile.
Right.
In my opinion, six or three would be way excessive, but, I mean, it's totally up to y'all. Like I say, if y'all want us to look at it for another month, we will, whatever the council wants, we will do.
Can we look at it for another month?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, I mean, the petition has been done, so we wouldn't have to go back and relook at this.
I will put out an email right after, guys, to tell them to do it another month.
They have to make a motion to take?
No, I'm not thinking too about funerals, I hadn't even thought about that.
Yeah, man. Every funeral that comes from the west, they all come down Ninth Street.
Yeah, they do.
No, since we did not have it as official, we tend to, we don't have to take it, just now. Next, the National League of Cities, City Summit, been sort of that today, so I know y'all probably seen that in your magazines, that's going on in the west this week. The 2021 budgets, it's required that the mayor deliver it to the council by the first of December, so I plan to hand deliver that to you on the 30th of October. I mean, November, yes. Thank you for that, Director.
I know I'm high, Mayor, but give me a break.
We are working diligently, and we'll have that to you before the first, before the first day of December. It'll be in your hands. And I did want to mention that currently, as of yesterday evening, we have 11 positive coronavirus cases within the city. Eleven, we have 11 positive cases in the city. So let's just go around the room and see what the council, you might have some comments. We'll start with Stacy.
Over the corner.
Stacy.
I don't have any, so raise your mask.
Yes, thank you. Kim?
Um, no, I'm just going to tell that the lights look good downtown, there's a lot of stuff going on downtown, so everybody will just kind of keep watching what's going on down there. And the Food Network has just been an awesome, has been wonderful for this town.
Yes.
I mean, Suzie is, is doing a great job taking it over, and it's amazing, you know, the volunteers that show up to help, so it's, it's really been a wonderful addition to this town. So hopefully, they can keep getting donations and keep it going. So that was, that was a good thing that we, that we got part of, so I'm proud of that one.
Well, by the council accepting these two bills here, I think, in my opinion, you know, made a good decision there, and let me just get this right here.
I wanted to talk to the city council and to you about our stable and major scene that we used on Main Street last year. No, afterwards, we, there was quite a bit of talk about trying to set it up someplace else, maybe in City Park, or the four-way stop or something, and have different churches, you know, kind of manned it, but I think during, because of all the COVID, that could be a good idea right now. And, you know, I didn't know if we want to try to do something with it, maybe with putting some mannequin type figures in there that would, and set it up and use it? Or do you think that what we're doing on Main Street now is sufficient for this year, and we don't want to mess with doing anything? Doesn't matter to me, I just, it's available if we want to use it someplace. You know, I thought I'd just bring it up, and let y'all be thinking about it and see. I think it'd be nice if we had to set it up.
We don't have a big tree, you know what I mean, down on Main Street, so it'd be, it'd be appropriate, I think. It wouldn't be a big deal to set it up down there by the, by the tree or whatever, but.
I don't know, I don't know what you think it'd be, would it be too big to put up down there?
The tree's going to be about 30 feet.
Who's it going to be set up?
It's going to be right in that, that area. And I think there's some other things that's going to be set up in that area, too, from what I understand. It's a secret, so I don't know.
Can't really tell, no.
It is a secret.
Well, and I can see we have some old figures going.
As long as we have, you know, a major scene, I think that'd be appropriate on you, so I think it'd be good to have something, other than just Santa Claus was set up, you know what I mean? I don't see where it would be a big problem. That's just my.
I've been to the Kennedy Gardens. I don't live around Santa Claus. I mean, I think the tree would be probably crazy.
Yeah, well, like I said, it doesn't matter to me, but. but it's available if we want to use it. So it's very nice. It's pretty fun to be used.
You're not using it.
Yeah.
So far, money is coming in kind of slow. We've contacted several merchants, so we haven't got too much. As far as people replied, that's all.
It's pretty hard to get people excited this, you know, this time. It really is. We're doing the best we can. We're trying to make it worth Christmas. Okay, through this White House Thanksgiving.
Kim, Kim's gonna have to. Thanks, Kim.
Is there anything else?
It's up.
Our needs some help. We've got all that old boards and things on the front of that second building that they own. And it's not only a nice story, it's, it's really a hazard because those things are just barely up there. But we need some help in getting those things down. It's gonna have to be taken down with something with a lift or a scaffolding. Scaffolding would be perfect, but boy, there again, you know, it's gonna be a job to put scaffolding up and get it down. If we could get, maybe somebody with a lift or some kind that could get up there and take that down, it'd look 100% better. You know, since we're trying to improve the downtown look, I think that would be the biggest improvement we could really make, get all that mess off the front of that building. I'm just asking, is there anything that maybe we could do as far as, I think it would help us a bunch as far as public opinion, that they could see us doing something down there, you know?
Well, you talked about all them boards across in front of that block.
Well, they're about half missing, so you've only got.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yeah.
You're talking about the one building there.
Right next to the R.
The two-story, the two-story building.
Right. Owned by R.
Yeah. She's just fresh, you know, trying to find somebody that can help. There hasn't been anybody that's volunteered that had it put up. I don't believe that or not. You know, I know we got a bucket truck. But I don't believe we got any other means of taking that down.
There's also a power line right above that.
There is a power line. We'll probably take the contact them and get, you know, some clearance on getting that done. And who knows, they might even be able to come down. Go up the south, you know, since it is a power line.
Now, as a result of the wind the other night, one of the buildings there to the south of that, if y'all been down there, is broke off.
Sorry, broke off, I didn't know why.
Mr. Julian put that on there because at the very top of the building, it appears, can't get up, get up there, that some of those bricks are loose over there once that covering was blown back. And so I contacted the owner of the building, knows her. He said he could be there on Saturday to take a look at that. And I told him it would be barricaded off until Saturday. And he will look at it and give an evaluation if, if it's really safe. Because Mr. Julian was probably, some of those bricks might fall. There was someone there, and so we didn't want that. So anyway, the owner's gonna be there on Saturday to evaluate what that looks like.
I guess I need to go downtown. Really clear that off. I don't have anything I, I put out to tell. I need to drive around town. Because I haven't been downtown. I didn't know we had a barricaded area.
It's just in front of the building. Okay, we've got Slavice sign up to speak about dogs.
I come in tonight to talk about the new dog ordinance and some things that I think I think about before I approve it. I work for a woman here in town, owner of yard. She's an elderly woman. She had a small dog. From all appearance, when I first seen it, I thought I'd need to call the city and find out what's going on with the dog. I went ahead and let her ride for a couple more moments. I finally asked her, I said, well, how, how old's your dog? She says, around about 14 years old. So this dog was skinny, frail, didn't look like it had been fed forever. That's one of the things I think needs to be looked into is if we do run into that and we insist on taking it to the vet, the vet said, yeah, the dog's just old, and that's it. Who recovers that cost? Is it the city? Is it the owner? Is it the one who called in on the dog in the first place? What takes place as we get discharged at 30, 40, 50 bucks? The dog being checked out since it was called on. Another thing, as we do find the dogs in bad shape, do we take the dog? Do we find the people? Do we completely take the dog away? Or do we try to get it back in shape? Educate the person on what was going on and wrong with the dog? They may not know. That's just things I think on that's there that may run into some problems.
Okay, no, that's not in ordinance.
I know.
What the ordinance is about is about food and shelter and the dog not being tamed. I mean, where it has to be.
Correct. The condition and the living, the living of the dog.
But we're not, that's not what we're taking on.
And that's another thing, that's, thank you for bringing that up. And that's another thing, where do we determine the size of the pen, cage, yard for a dog? And you have all different types of dogs. You may have a husky. You may have another dog that does not do well in cold. I heard a post on Facebook the other day saying, my husky wants outside all the time now. So you're driving by seeing this dog out in snow. He's a husky. He loves it. You may put another dog out there for two minutes, he hates it. So that's another thing we need to see. Who determines? And how do we determine, bring the dog, which dog is appropriate outside in the winter, which one's not appropriate in summer? A child in the summertime will burn up in the summertime. Stick them outside again in the wintertime, you're fine. Pekingese, whatever, Chihuahuas, totally breeds of dogs, different size, different cages. So how do we come by and say that cage is too small, it's too big?
Okay.
Where do we find this? What, what book do we have, like the Roberts Rules? Y'all have for this that kind of, it builds your framework. And this ordinance, I'm not seeing a framework that needs to be there of the appropriate size of the cage, pen, length of the dog needs to run, what small old dog may run, may not be appropriate for a big dog. So how many feet do we need on that runner? Can be five feet, can be 30 feet, 40 feet, 50 feet. I'm just saying, we need to think about these things before we approve it of what determines this. Do we have AKC? Is there a book out there we can refer to, like Roberts Rules? That way, when we go out, we have a sound mind of what we're looking at. And any officer or anybody that goes out there and looks at this and say, this right here is what we're going off of. 30 foot, 20 foot, for this size, this size of dog, so on and so forth. But that's one of the things I just want to bring to attention that I did not see in the ordinance, that you may want to look at, just the cost of it. Do we return the dog? Do we not return the dog? How bad was the situation? And also, without those things in there, it can also be a battle between two neighbors, calling back and forth on each other's dogs. So you have an officer going out yet again, 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 and again, checking on the same situation over and over. And that's about all I had about the dog works.
Great, thank you. Okay, this time, if there's anything else, I have a motion to adjourn. All right, everyone, say hi.